The meeting of the planning and zoning commission to order. Today is September the third of two thousand and twenty. The first item is, of course, roll call. Can you all hear me?
Fernando.
Yes, sir. Pedro Asma Vierdell?
Present.
Jose Tevez? Jorge Dominguez? Jorge Dominguez?
He's present, but he's muted.
Okay. Rafael Duenas? Abraham Lugo? Johnny Narvai?
Present.
Raúl Ugaldé?
Present.
George Beckelheimer? I believe he's there, but he might be muted.
Yep.
Carlos Flores? For the record, Mr. Chairman, you do have quorum.
All right, thank you. Can we have a motion to excuse Commissioner Tevez, Flores, Lugo, and is it Duenas? Yes.
Tomo Ugaldé.
We have a motion in a second.
I'll second the motion. Dominguez.
All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item that we have is the approval of the minutes of the meeting of August twentieth, two thousand and twenty. Does anybody have any additions, deletions? I'll give you guys about a minute to peruse them again, just in case you all want to refresh yourselves, and then at that point, I can entertain a motion at any time for approval or whatever.
I move to approve the meetings of August twentieth, two thousand and twenty.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second, Ugaldé.
Ugaldé, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Citizens' comments. Do we have anybody on the line that would like to address the commission, Kirby?
There is about a thirty-second lag. If we can give it a minute.
Alrighty.
We'll alert you if staff receives any calls from the public.
All right, I guess there is nobody on the line ready to address the commission.
No calls received, Mr. Chairman. No calls received.
The next item that we have is review and consideration of the following master plans. We're going to go into item number A. Review and reconsideration of Winfield subdivision master plan. The intent is residential and commercial. The purpose of this revision is to remove a phase. All right?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is John García. The engineer of record is Juan Ludwig. Three hundred and eight point sixty-six acre tract of land located north of Delmar Boulevard and west of Babulaglu. The zoning is R one and R three. The proposed uses for this master plan is residential, commercial, institutional. The proposed lots are six hundred and thirty-three. General location. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed revised master plan. Comments from planning and water utilities. And from traffic safety. Mr. Chairman, for the record, I do have correspondence from the traffic safety department to strike or remove traffic safety comment number one for the record.
All right.
Comments from parks and the proposed motion.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Danny Tejera, we do have Oscar Castillo on the phone in case you all have any questions.
All right, thank you. Does anybody on the commission have any questions for Mr. Castillo? All right, no questions heard. What are the wishes of the commission?
This is Ugaldé. I move to approve the motion.
All right. Is there a second? I'm sorry, who was the second? Duenas? Okay.
Si correcto, Chairman. Duenas, second.
Okay, gracias. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, I'm going to abstain from voting on this item. Mr. Dominguez.
All right, thank you. Okay. Those that are in favor of the motion, those that are not in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. Somebody said something.
I just reminded everybody, if you're not speaking, to mute your mic. We're getting some feedback.
Okay. So, those who are not in favor of the motion to approve signify by saying aye right now. With none heard, we do have one abstention, which is Mr. Jorge Dominguez. The motion then carries. Thank you. The next item is item B, review and reconsideration of the DNJ subdivision master plan. The intent is residential and commercial. The purpose of the revision is to reduce the area of unit thirteen. All right?
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Fernando Morales. Applicant is DNJ Alexander Management. Engineer is premier engineering and surveying. Property description and location is eight hundred and ninety-eight point seventy-nine acres, located south of Delmar and northwest of Casa Verde Road. The zoning for this property is R one, R two, B one. B two is probably incorrect. We need to verify that. And B three. Proposed use is residential, commercial. Proposed number of lots is one thousand four hundred and eighty-one. Location map. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed master plan. Staff comments from planning, water utilities. And the proposed motion.
All right. Does anybody on the commission have any questions for Mr. Morales?
Well. Or?
The next. If nobody has any questions for Mr. Morales, do we have the engineer of record on?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman. Eddie Gutierrez from Premier Engineering is on the phone right now. Eddie, go ahead.
Yes, good afternoon, commissioners. We're in concurrence with the Congress as perceived.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody on the commission have any questions for Mr. Gutierrez? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
I make a motion to approve such as recommendations, Mr. Chairman. Listen, Mr. Dominguez.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and we have a second by Commissioner Beckelheimer. All those who are not in favor of the motion to approve signify by saying aye right now. With none heard, motion carries. The next item is consideration of the following preliminary plots and preliminary replats. Item six A, preliminary consideration of plant of DNJ Alexander subdivision unit thirteen. The intent is residential.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the applicant, the applicant is DNJ Alexander Management LP. The engineer is premier civil engineering. The property description and location is six point seventy-one acre tract of land located south of Delmar Boulevard and west of Babulaglu. The zoning for this property is R one. The proposed use is residential. And the proposed number of lots is twenty-eight. This is a location map. The aerial view. A street view. The proposed subdivision plot. And staff comments from planning. Water utilities and parks and leisure. And the proposed motion.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, we have Eddie Gutierrez, the project engineer, on the phone to answer any questions you may have.
All right, put him on.
Eddie, go ahead.
Good afternoon. Again, the lot will give us with the record, we concur with staff comments.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody in the commission have any questions for Mr. Gutierrez? All right, if nobody having any questions, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve subject to the following comments, not advice.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second, Duenas, second.
A second from Mr. Duenas. All those who are not in favor of the motion to approve signify by saying aye right now. With none heard, motion carries. Item six B, preliminary consideration of the plant of R and R Company of America. The intent is commercial.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the applicant on this plat is the R and R Company of America. The project engineer for this is the Salsedo Group. The property in question is one point two five acres. It is located west of Santa Ursula Avenue, north of Jefferson, and is bounded by San Bernardo. The zoning for the parcels is B three and B four. The proposed use is commercial, and they are basically replating seven lots into one. Here is a general location map. Here is a close-up aerial of the site. Street view. The proposed plat, replat, better said. Staff comments from the planning department. More comments from planning and engineering. Utilities and traffic safety. And your proposed motion.
Danny, can you go back to the slide that's got the different lots that are going to be planted? That one?
Yes, sir.
So, it's one, two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Okay, okay. That's all I needed. I just wanted to check the size of that block. Does anybody in the commission have any other questions for Mr. Tejera? If not, do we have the engineer?
What was the proposed use? I'm sorry.
The proposed use?
It is my understanding that the owner, that they are proposing to build a plasma donation center.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Are they coming back for rezoning? Are they going to leave it on B four? What's going to supersede once the replat goes on?
What is the zoning for a plasma center? Is it a B four?
That is, that's a great question. Let me, let me check here.
As a medical, it will work in multiple zones, not just the B four zone.
But they currently have a B four, right?
They do. So, the B four allows everything in the zones B three and under B one. And as office medical, I believe you could be in B one, B three as well, and B four. So, any of them would work. But zoning, that's part of the process. When we, when we go through the planning process, we, of course, look at the zoning as well, make sure they're in conformance with that. And one of our comments would have been that they need to get a zone change if it was required. So, it's definitely something we always review.
All right. Any other questions, Mr. Dominguez, for the staff or the engineer?
No, that was my question, just to make sure that they come back and, because we've got multiple zones there, Mr. Chairman. And it should have been with the proposal. At the preliminary plat, it should follow up with zoning, so we would approve a zone together with the preliminary plat. But that's fine. I mean, they can come back. And we'll go ahead and see what they catch there. What we're going to use for it, what they want. Is it a B three or a B four? Okay.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, I do have Mr. Luis Salsedo, the engineer of record, if there are any questions from the commission for him.
Yes, let's listen to him and see if he's okay with the comments.
Mr. Salsedo, the question from the commission is if you are okay with the staff comments, sir?
Yes, yes, definitely. We will comply with the staff comments. All right.
And I just looked up the use table, and medical offices are permitted, as I said, in all of our commercial zones, so that zoning will not be a problem. And just as a reminder, we do look up the zoning for all of these plots that come in, and if they're not in conformance, that's part of our recommendation.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
So, Mr. Dominguez, Commissioner Dominguez's point, the lots of different zones, Kirby, so does it belong to the higher zone or?
Anything permitted in a B one is permitted in a B three. Anything permitted in a B three is permitted in a B four. Yeah, all the zones that are lower are permitted in a higher zone.
I understand that. You explained it clearly enough. I'm saying that some of them are B three, some of them are B four. So, let's pretend, I mean, it's a plasma center or not. What happens to the zoning if it turns into one lot?
I'm sorry, Mr. Beckelheimer, I'm having a difficult time understanding the question because the law is breaking up.
I believe that your slide presentation, which, if you go back, it says the lots are B three and B four. Is that not correct?
That is correct, but this is permitted in both zones, so it wouldn't.
No, no, I'm not talking about, it could be a circus. That's not the point. Just asking, when you make them all one lot, what's it going to end up as, as a zone? Because some aren't B four. Does it all turn into B four automatically, or does that end up becoming petition or what happens?
No, the zoning as applied stays.
But it's going to turn into one lot, right?
That's correct, but the zoning designation stays unless changed by council or the applicant.
Oh, just by a dotted line?
Just, the designation doesn't have to correspond with property boundaries. In other words, you could have one large parcel that has multiple zones on it, and we do that in, on several properties in the city. It's not the best situation. In some situations, it's just fine. In this situation, it's not a question at all.
Thank you, Kirby.
No problem.
Okay, any other questions from the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve and also make a comment that they should come back with the with the proposed development of that area. And that it would be in accordance to the proper zoning. Just, we can include that because once we approve this, that's a multiple zone. So, the designation will probably be approved. And a B four might be the most appropriate because of the area, and I don't have a problem going with a B four. But also, I would like to have a comment, just that we would expect for them to come back with the zoning to be completed for the whole replat, if that's in order.
Mr. Dominguez, this is Danny Tejera for the record. Sir, just so you are aware, the use that they are proposing is allowed in both a B four and a B three, so there's really no reason for them to get a rezoning. They are, the use that they are seeking is permitted by rights.
I understand, Danny. Thank you for clarifying that, but I don't agree with you. The, since they're becoming one lot, okay, we need to designate this, designate what lot, either a B three or a B four. So, don't tell me that B three and B four are going to be one right next to the other because they comply. I understand that. But I still would like to see either a B three or a B four. And I think my request is in order.
Let me just add to that a little bit, and I'm just going to play devil's advocate on what Dominguez is saying. Let's assume you build a structure, and the structure is over multiple zones. And then there is, for whatever reason, let's say, a foreclosure or a sale. Now it becomes a little bit trickier on the uses because you have a building that goes over multiple zones. And how do you police something like that, Kirby?
Well, it's not an issue here because it's one building, one lot, and one use. If in the future, they were to sell the building and come back in, renovate the building, put in a commercial grated firewall that allowed them to parcel out the two, and if all of that met all the requirements of of building code and zoning, at that point, they would have to get a rezone if they wanted to, if they wanted to do a use that was allowed in one and not in the other. That's, those are a lot of ifs, and it's certainly not something that they're required to do by code. So, they don't have, they can, they can go just fine with two zones on one property, and there are many places in the city where that's the case. There's nothing in our code that says that is not allowed.
There's nothing in the code that says it's not allowed, that you can build over multiple zones, as long as
You have multiple levels on one property.
It's allowable in each of the zones.
Yes, correct.
I guess the question, the problem that I think a lot of the commissioners are sort of having on this idea is, where is that invisible like it to be on the building or? You know, it becomes a tricky issue to the future is what I'm seeing here, and I think Commissioner Dominguez is seeing something similar. And I think this is why we're asking all these questions. We're just trying to do the right thing for everybody.
Your questions are definitely appreciated, and this was something we reviewed when we, when we took a look at it. And as I mentioned, there's, there are situations in the city where it is a problem, and we want to correct it when we would see it. For instance, when you would have something split residential and commercial, that would be something to rectify. But in this situation where you have B three and B four, and the use that they're going to build is going to be permitted in both, and this, this structure that they're going to build or the use that they're going to do is going to be longstanding, it's, it would be just fine for them to come in for a zone change in the future if and when it does create a problem. But the potential here is extremely minimal that there would ever be an issue at this property with these two zones.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have, I have a comment.
Yes.
I don't, I don't think we should require the applicant to come back for a zone change to just choose between zones. I mean, that's going to add time and money to the project, and I think it's, I think it isn't fair for the applicant at this time. There is nothing prohibiting them to do it. That we shouldn't be dictating to the applicant what he needs to do because we feel that it requires a blanket zone.
Okay, good comment. Very good. All right, anybody else?
Just a quick comment, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Raúl, Commissioner Raúl Ugaldé. But I will, I would still like to see that replat under one zone. And I don't think the applicant would mind. I mean, why would anybody want to have disagreed to have the whole property under a B four? I mean, it just, for, for me, it makes common sense that 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 lot be under one zone, whether B three or B four. And I'm ready to make a motion to approve. And we're not trying to table it, Commissioner Ugaldé. I mean, we're going to go ahead and go with it. It's just that I think it's appropriate that one lot, one zone, that's the way it should be.
Anybody else have anything to comment from the commission?
Duenas, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
Hold on, I got, we're still in the discussion. I'll take that second in a little bit, George. Duenas, go ahead.
Si, yo, yo estoy, pienso igual que Raúl Ugaldé, el comisionado Raúl Ugaldé. Y estoy viendo que la zona es comercial donde están los dos, tanto Santa Ursula como San Bernardo. Yo no veo por qué tenemos que retrasarlo. Yo de mi parte estoy convencido que.
I'll go to the phone and shut the computer down except for the video. It's working. Now I know how to troubleshoot next time.
Okay, all right.
Okay, gracias.
Okay, anybody else?
What's the motion? I'm sorry, Chairman.
Can you repeat the motion, Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes, the motion is to approve the preliminary plat of R and R Company of America. But that they come back to us and get the property under one zone. Whatever is appropriate with, with planning and zoning, whether a B three or a B four. That's the motion right there.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman, but I don't think we can require the zone thing. It's just a strong suggestion, correct?
That's what I was going to say. I think all we can do is make a suggestion. I don't, we cannot, because this is a plat. It's strictly, there's two different items, a plat and obviously a zoning matter. We're dealing with a plat issue. The Commissioner Dominguez, I think what you can, your motion can say it'd be a recommendation or a suggestion. But I think because we're in a plat issue, we have to look at a plat, strictly a plat. If it meets the requirements of preliminary plating, we have to look at that and not the zoning issue at this point.
I'll go ahead and amend the motion, Mr. Chairman. The motion would be motion to approve the primary plat. And in accordance to any zone that might be particular to that building, they should be approved for the full lot.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second on that motion?
Yes, I seconded, Mr. Chairman.
You seconded, all right. All those who are not in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. So, all right. In that case, is everybody is okay with the motion and the second? Therefore, the motion is approved. All right, the next item is preliminary consideration of the plat of Lomas and Sue subdivision, unit twenty-one. The intent is residential.
Mr. Fernando.
Yes, sir. I'm waiting for the slide. There you go. Applicant is ALS Laredo Holdings LLP. Engineer, Sherpy Engineering Company. Property description, location is eight point sixty-one acre tract of land located south of Lomas and Sue and east of Vihido Avenue. The present, the proposal, I mean, I'm sorry, the zoning is R one A. The proposed use is residential. The number of lots is forty-eight. The location map. Aerial view. Street view. Subdivision plat. Staff comments from planning, engineering. Water utilities, traffic safety, and parks and leisure. Proposed, excuse me, proposed motion.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Danny Tejera, for the record, I have Frank Estrada on the phone to answer any questions that the commission may have.
All right, let us listen to Frank Estrada.
Frank, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Frank Estada was Sherpy Engineering, and we concur with staff comments.
Okay, very good, thank you. Does anybody in the commission have any questions for Frank Estrada? All right, if nobody has any questions, what are the wishes of the commission?
I move that we approve with the staff comments.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second, Ugaldé.
A second from Ugaldé. All those that are not in favor of the approval signify by saying aye right now. With none heard, the motion carries. All right, the next item that we have is the preliminary consideration of the replat of lots three, four, five, six, seven, eight, block sixteen, seventy-nine, Eastern Division. Into light, a, a block sixteen, seventy-nine, Eastern Division, intent is commercial.
Rafa, you are muted.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is Newman Family Partnership. The engineer of record is Sherpy Engineering Company. One point two acre tract of land located south of Highway fifty-nine and east of Arkansas. The zoning is B three. The zoning is B three. The proposed use is commercial and the proposed number of lots is one. General area. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed replat. Comments from planning. Engineering, environmental and traffic safety. Tech Department of Transportation. And the proposed motion.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Danny De Hidina, uh, we have the project engineer, um, Frank Estrada on the phone, uh, to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, let's go ahead and put him on.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Frank Estrada with, uh, Sherpy Engineering and, uh, we concur with staff comments.
All right, thank you. Does anybody on the commission have any questions at this point for Mr. Estrada?
Just a quick question, Mr. Chairman. Uh, there was an issue, uh, with, uh, traffic as to the, uh, the distance in between the, uh, the entrance to the, uh, to the proposed, uh, uh, improvements. I just wanted to, to, to make sure that that was clarified. I mean, I'm not opposing to the, uh, to the, uh, to the approval. I just wanna know if everything was, uh, was okay with that entrance.
Well, I, I think at this point, it's a note from the Traffic Safety Department and from Techstat. But this is preliminary. It still has to be worked out between the engineer, the applicant and the state and the city before it comes to us as final. This is a preliminary right now.
Well, that's fine. I mean, if I, if I can be allowed to make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve of course you are.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second, Rebecca Hammer. All those who are not in favor of the approval motion signify by saying aye. With none heard, the motion carries. All right, we're moving into reconsideration of the following preliminary plats. Replus, item number seven. Item, uh, seven A is preliminary consideration of the plat of Santa Cecilia State Subdivision and the granting of a variance. To the subdivision ordinance requirement that, uh, street jogs with centerline effects of less than three hundred feet shall be avoided. The intent is residential, all right?
Mr. Chairman, before we go into details in this item, uh, I read over the, uh, the item and there's a lot of, uh, legal issues. As a matter of fact, I believe that this, uh, is still in litigation. And, uh, I noticed that, uh, they're taking for granted or they're trying to, uh, to make a, uh, a comment that we have the, 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 the authority to make a decision over this. We are, I, I think for myself, I as a member of the, uh, of the commission, I'm not, uh, an attorney. And, uh, unless we have an attorney from the city of Laredo President that will guide us to this, I think, uh, whatever decision we make is gonna be a liability not only for the community, for the, for the commission, but also for the city of Laredo. Uh, I would expect that, uh, a judge, when this is settled, give us a guidance to make a, uh, an approval or denial of this item. That's, that's my, 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 my comment right there, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you very much for your comment. Kirby, what, uh, is your take on the, on that comment?
I would think it would be better said after Rafa gets through the presentation.
Very good. Well, let him go ahead and make his presentation.
The applicant, uh, is Seco Holdings LLC. The engineer of record is Do Right Engineering LLC. Five point eighty-three acre tract located south of Casa El Sol and west of Alavara Drive. The zoning is R one A. The proposed use is residential and the proposed number of lots is thirty-eight. General location. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plat. And these are the staff comments. Now, the recommendation from staff is the denial of the, uh, variance and based on the proposed alignment of Santa Cecilia Street. And at Enia Loop or a traffic safety concern as the design does not comply with section three dash two F of the subdivision ordinance. In addition to, we do have the comment from planning. Water utilities. Traffic safety. And parks and leisure.
And the proposed motion. And so just to reiterate, our recommendation as staff is to, as the design as it currently is to the approval of this plat because it does not comply with
You will have, you will have a chance to keep, okay?
It doesn't comply with the requirements of the code. Now, we've, uh, we've, we've spent a lot of time working with the applicant, understanding the situation. And the applicant will share their, their side of it in just a second, but, um, uh, they're not necessarily uh, disagreeing with our recommendation. Um, they understand that from, from their point of view, they have an agreement with a a, a property owner or a dispute rather, that does not affect the standards that we have in place. In other words, there's not, there's not an agreement that two property owners can make that, uh, that change the requirements that the city has. So we don't need you to make any decision on any, on any civil, um, agreement that two parties have. All we're asking you to do is to evaluate the requirements the city has. And the, the big one here that is not, uh, that it's not in compliance is that the, that jog, if you see the two streets going east and west, uh, Adenia Loop, turning into that cul-de-sac and then turning back, that creates a, a traffic safety issue. And it wasn't like that in the original design. In the original design, there was enough room to be able to make that left turn going north. Um, and traffic safety was comfortable with it. But because of the dispute they have with the property owner, they lost some property and they pushed everything up. And that's created a design that, that is not in compliance with our current code. That's why we're recommending denial.
All right.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, uh, I don't, I don't agree with Kirby. Uh, because some of the, uh, of the wording on the legal documents that were attached to this item, they state very clearly that, uh, one of the reasons they're being sued is because, uh, they're, uh, they're doing something that is not, was not standard on the original, um, the, uh, the deed. So if we're gonna go ahead and approve it, then it would also, we will also be circo, uh, going, uh, kinda looping what is on the deed. Because, uh, if we approve it, then we're going for the, uh, for the, uh, for the defendant. And, and I think if we deny it, we're also going now for the, uh, for the plaintiff. So I feel that, uh, that either we table it or we deny it. But both of the, uh, of the items, even, even approving it is, is kinda, on my, on my view, is given a lot of, uh, liability to the, uh, to the committee. I don't, I don't even think that this should be brought to us, uh, unless it was already settled in court. That's my comment.
Thank you. Do we have the engineer for this particular item, uh, who would like to speak to the item?
Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the commission, uh, we do have Mr. Ricardo Ramos and the property owner uh, on the phone right now to address any questions and any issues. Um, Mr. Ramos, go ahead, sir.
Yes, uh, good afternoon, commissioners, I would like to ask about the two rights. The right, and also the property owner shall be lifted on the line. Good afternoon, Christian.
Good afternoon.
Um, what, what we did is, um, I mean, I, we provided all the documentation, kinda giving you an entry on this, what we can point to, but what, what's happening is that the deed for this property is tied to the original San Jose subdivision master plan. And, uh, I don't know, I didn't see it on the, on the board here at the computer, but, um, I don't know. Do you have the original master plan?
Mr. Mr. Ramos, can you speak up a little bit, please?
Yes, okay, Mr. Ramos, can you hear me?
That's better, that's better.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. It's just, what I was saying is that the, the deed for this property is tied to the, the San Jose subdivision master plan. And, um, and that's what we were trying to propose with this, uh, this request is, is, um, we're asking if we, if we can get that variant so we can, uh, basically match the, the, um, designs that was approved in, in, uh, two thousand, the year two thousand. And, um, that's so I, I don't know if the, the commission has the, the copy of that, uh, original master plan. Nope?
No, we do not. I have, I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Kirby, so the issue is, is that if you're heading east and you hit that cul-de-sac and you take a right and take a left, that's too short of a distance to that right-left?
That's correct. Uh, Danny McGee, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, if you could, uh, provide for the commission, if you could help them understand, number one, how that's not in compliance with our code, that requires a, a, a sign, a jog that's significant. And then number two, if you could explain why that's unsafe.
Okay, um, as you can see, the street coming in from Adenia, it comes in from east to west. And the street also extends down to the south, Santa Cecilia. And the, the movements that we would expect the traffic, the traveling public to make are reasonable. Um, I pride myself on trying to always find a compromise work with. But this is one, one area that if this was to be allowed to missionaries, I would have no fix for this. No stop signs, whatever you, I could do. The one that would surprise would be the driving public. That's the reason we put these jo, the, the requirement to space streets apart is because it gives us a chance to have the public in and at, at the right angles. In this case, there's just a lot of driveways that would be coming into the intersection, a lot of movements that maybe on paper they might be okay, but nobody drives the way that would have to be put on, on, on the, on a template here. So thi- this is something that I'm really, really opposed to. I mean, I, I, I try to find a compromise solution, but there really isn't in this case. It would be tying my hands to fix it in the future.
Now, there is a design that could work, but they would have to lose a few lots in order to do that. And the, the original master plan, uh, had the same number of lots. And so they, they weren't able to acquire the land they needed to make that original design work. But they did not, even though they lost that land, they did not, uh, lose any lots. They still want the same number of lots. And this design keeps the same number of lots, however it does so, compromising the safety of the, of the traffic, and that's why they're asking for that variance. But I need to point out that a variance can be granted by the planning commission under certain conditions. One of those conditions is that it does not, it does not, uh, create a, a safety issue for the residents that will inherit, uh, this design.
Of course. Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Kirby.
Sure, go ahead.
Kirby, is this something that if we table it, you think that you all can come to terms with the, with a better design?
I think the appropriate would be a denial that would allow them to come back under a different design. Denying this doesn't mean this won't happen. It means that this design does not work. Tabling it, uh, I'm not sure that, I mean, that, that could, we could arrive at the same thing. But by denying it, you're making it clear that this design and that variance that they're requesting is not gonna be acceptable and that they'll have to find another design that works. And we're definitely open to working with them, but the reality is that in this situation to align that street correctly, you're going to need to lose a few lots. Uh, you, you're not gonna be able to keep the same number of lots as the original design, which had more land to the south that they were planning to pick up and were not able to.
Is this, is this the southeast corner that, that would need to be lost? I mean, the southwest corner, pardon me.
There's, there's multiple ways you could accomplish it. That, that would be one way.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right.
Hello, okay. Hello, uh, Mr. Ricardo. Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Ramos.
Okay.
Mr. Ramos.
I, I do wanna ask that
Oh, oh, Mr. 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 Ramos. Is there, is there any way that you can speak up or get closer to the phone, please?
Okay, uh, let me, let me see. Okay, I'm up there, can you hear me?
That's better, yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry, I had it on speakerphone, hang up, buddy. I was gonna say that, that, uh, we, we have worked with, uh, traffic deposit to try to get it far as what, you know, to the only thing was is that if, if we changed configuration of the street and don't match that, that, uh, that, uh, original master plan, San Jose, then it puts my client, uh, left in, I guess, liable for, for not following the, the, the deed. So what I had done, I don't know if, if y'all have seen the, the intersection, uh, layout that, that I provided. And, and I had, uh, recommended a, uh, an always stop. So we won't have that issue as far as, uh, that, you know, actually, because of the nature. Does the commission have that, that example or that, uh, I
All right. Have any other additional comments?
Mr. Um, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Danny De Hidina, for the record, uh, uh, the engineer is asking if the commission was provided with, uh, uh, with a sketchy design that has an always stop.
Rafa, is that something that they submitted?
Um, Mr. Ramos, uh, uh, you submit that to our department or to traffic?
Yeah, it was part of the package.
Yes, the entire package was submitted in the backup.
So it's, so what they submitted was included in the packet and they did
Yes.
Did, uh, uh, they did not submit a different design, is that correct?
Right, we had, the, their, their entire packet, it was also added in the packet to the commission.
So that, that, uh, what is it, the one three-way or four-way design for stop signs, is that what he's talking about? That was submitted? I'm, I'm having trouble really hearing him a little bit. Um, so you guys are gonna have to help me out here. I think that's what I heard him say, something about, something with stop signs, is that, is that what he said?
Mr. Chairman, give me one second.
Mr. Chairman, Danny McGee, traffic engineer.
All right, go ahead.
He has submitted some drawings showing that the side distance is adequate. And I believe he did show, uh, a scenario where we have stop signs all the way around. But in my opinion, but my vast years of experience, it still will not work. People will not drive the way, uh, it needs to be so it would work. Uh, and this can, this can be easily fixed just by configuring the street into with an S curve or continuing it further to the west. Why they don't wanna do that, I understand, because they, they have their own, um, suit going on. But basically, the owner of this bought something without knowing what the conditions were and he's trying to get the city to, to fix this problem for him.
All right, thank you, uh, Danny, for your comments. Does anybody in the commission I'm sorry, who's that?
Give me. Okay, 'cause, uh, my, my client, uh, make sure when I, Danny, uh, to, to the, to the record, is that, that the street jogs, um, they're pretty common residential subterranean. Uh, we, we reviewed some of the, uh, previously approved, uh, subdivision, uh, master plans and and I, mm, we, we saw like Acedo, uh, Phase Two, which was approved in like eight, six, twenty, twenty, that had, uh, that had like a double street jogs, I mean, kinda like a field goal shape. But then we also saw October Creek, uh, that was approved on seven, six, twenty, twenty. And that one also had a double street dog, like a field goal shape. Also saw the, the V S M, I was deemed, unit seven. And that one, and that one was on seven, sixteen, twenty, twenty, that one had a, a street jog. Patro Histo Suh. Uh, there was two areas that had a street dog and that one was approved on seven, sixteen, twenty, twenty. And then, uh, we, we just noticed on, on the one that was approved today for item five three. So I want to, it's thirty, it's thirty-two, has a street dog. So, so this is kinda, uh, common for, for residential, residential subdivision. And my client, he said, make sure that I, that, that, that's, that's that was, that's it, thank you.
Commissioner, uh, Commissioner, uh, if I can-
Go ahead, Kirby.
So a couple of things here for, for y'all to consider as you, as you make a decision. Yes, you have the option, well, you have the option of approving, you have the option of denying. You also have the option to table this as well. And, uh, you know, we, we, of course, we always work with the applicants, reach out to them, share our comments with them. So this isn't the first time that they've heard our concerns, uh, with the issue here. The issue is the, that our streets need to align or they need to significantly jog. So that you don't, when you get to a jog that's, that is too close, when the streets are too close but not aligned, you create a safety issue. And that's what our traffic engineer was trying to explain. Not only is that a safety issue, but it's also a requirement in our code that streets either align or they have a significant jog. And that's why the applicant is requesting a variance because they're asking you to ignore this rule. Now, to rule a variance, the planning commission has to vote, uh, in a two-thirds, uh, two-thirds of the planning commission or two-thirds of the quorum has to say, yes, we're going to ignore this rule. So it's not a simple majority in this case of this variance to approve the subdivision. You'd have to have two-thirds of the, or greater of the, uh, the quorum here today to ignore this rule. But just be aware that if you do that and you allow this variance, you're creating a safety issue. And one of the reasons that the, or one of the conditions of a variance being granted is that you do not, uh, and and maybe I should pull this up so you can see it, but what the code says is a planning commission can grant a variance as long as it doesn't create a safety issue for the community. And, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and pull that up while you're deliberating so you can see it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I don't think, um, I mean, I'm not, I wouldn't vote to approve, but, um, but can you split hairs with us about the difference between tabling it and staff working it out and denying it and making, and having the applicant start a new process? Can you, can you comment on that at Osmal?
Well, I think what Kirby said was that, uh, if, if we table the item, that they've, they've tried to work with, I think, the engineer as much as they could to, to try to get them to fix the problem and, and meet the, the ordinances of the city. To deny it would force the issue where you'd have to come back with a redesign that meets the city's standards. If I said that correctly. Kirby, correct me if I, you know, did get something right.
You're correct. I just want to add one element to that, and that is that, uh, the applicant, uh, wants a decision because if the decision is denial, that's something that they can, uh, that's something they've told us they can use to address the issue that they have with this, with their, the agreement that they have because they can say, well, we can't make this work with the current, uh, uh, you know, how we're bound with that agreement. Um, now, that agreement really shouldn't weigh into your decision. You should just be evaluating the city's standards. Uh, and, and you don't have to have a law degree to make a decision of whether or not this, this lies within the, uh, you know, the, the, the requirements of the city code. But, um, as we understand it, they want a decision of approval or denial.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions from the commission or any comments?
Uh, I'm gonna make a final comment, uh, Mr. Chairman, real quick. Uh, I, uh, I agree with, uh, Kirby on certain items, but also I, this, uh, this variance would be, uh, appropriate if there were no litigation. And I think, uh, the, uh, the board or, or the commission would make a multi- a good decision on tabling and allowing staff to try to work it out. But on this particular, uh, instance, what they're trying to get, they're trying to get a, a, a variance and an approval so they can bring before court and say, look, this is what, uh, what we have from the commission that already gave us an okay to change the master plan. Now, the master plan is being mentioned on the, uh, on the, uh, on, on the title or a deed that was, was, was granted. Now, the person that bought it, they didn't see that that was a condition. So I feel that we're being used as an instrument to try to break that condition. So not being an attorney and, uh, and I being attorney's present, I believe that, uh, that we should deny it and let, uh, the, uh, the, the owners and the, uh, the litigants to finish it in court and then get guidance from the court and, and make the approve, the, uh, the correct decision. So I'm ready to make a, a motion if I'm allowed, sir.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to deny and to follow staff recommendations.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Can I just, puedo hablar algo, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Yo creo que son dos tópicos aquí. Uno es el tráfico que con el stop sign creo que no habría problema. Y si estamos a favor del desarrollo y de que haya más empleos y de que haya más tasas y de que crezca Laredo, pero creo que también como, como con que tenemos que cuidar mucho la seguridad. Y estas calles no creo que nos permitan que los camiones grandes de bomberos entren y salgan rápido en un momento de accidente y está muy por encima la vida de la gente de, de cualquier otra cosa. Entonces yo sí tengo la sugerencia de que el propio aplicante lo ponga a la tabla y modifique las calles o bien si no quiere ponerlo a la, de, de table, este, pues estoy de acuerdo también con mis compañeros, con, con George Dominguez. Es, es mi precisión que, que nos den más seguridad en, en las calles más amplias. Gracias.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second on the motion?
We have a second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second on the motion by Commissioner Beckelheimer.
Yes.
I'm going to-
Second is now.
In this case, I am going to ask for everybody to vote in favor of the motion in the affirmative, not like we've been doing business in the past. Affirmative vote for everybody on this one. So all those that are in favor of the motion to deny, I need you to vote by saying aye. All right?
Aye.
All right? Is there anybody that is not in favor of the motion to deny? None heard, the motion to deny is, uh, carries. All right? The next item that we have is the, uh, consideration and the following final plats and final replats. This is item eight. Item eight has A, B, C, and D. If I can have a motion from somebody to take them all as one and then can vote on it?
I move to take them all at once.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. Right? All those who are not in agreement with taking them all at the same time, signify by saying aye. All right? The motion carries. And can we have a motion for approval?
I move that we approve those items.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second motion, Dominguez.
Uh, we have a second. All those who are not in favor of the approval signify by saying aye. Motion carries. All the items for finals are approved. The next item that we have is director's comments.
Yes, let me stop sharing just for a second. I want to say-
Mr. Chairman, can you still see me?
I cannot see you.
Yeah, okay, I apologize. I, I don't have video for the rest of the meeting.
Well, actually, first, let me say, welcome back, Commissioner Beckelheimer. We're glad to hear that you're feeling well enough to participate. And, um, also, at the same time, we want to say farewell to Commissioner Beckelheimer because his replacement will be, uh, voted on being appointed, uh, at the city council meeting on Tuesday. And so I want to say a special thanks. I want to say thanks to everybody for your service. No one on the planning commission receives any reimbursement for their time. They do, everyone does this as volunteers. But I want to say especially thank you to Commissioner Beckelheimer for your service. It was very much appreciated and, and we're going to miss you.
Thank you, Kirby. That's very kind of you. I appreciate that. And I, it was an honor to serve with everybody here. I think this is a very ethical, intelligent, caring group, and I've learned quite a bit. And I appreciate the leadership of, uh, of Osmal, uh, Chairman Vialli. That's, it's been great. And I miss you guys.
We're gonna miss, we're gonna miss you, but I know you're, you've got future plans and we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, much.
We close, wish you that best of health into the future. Take care.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, before, before we adjourn, um, um, I want to bring this up. Uh, some of us have, have been prob- having problem with the equipment. And, uh, and I think, uh, there should be tablets or there should be some type of, uh, of equipment that should be granted to us as commissioners and, and that we don't get forced to buy equipment to be in these meetings. We're volunteering our time. And I think, uh, that there might be some savings that we're not using, some money that we're not using with food. I personally would like to have a, a, some type of equipment that I wouldn't have a problem communicating. And I think some of the, uh, of the other committee members, I mean, we're not, we don't want it to, uh, to, we don't want to keep it, but if we're gonna be doing this for the next three or four months, I think it's in order that we have the right equipment that we can properly communicate, not only with the, uh, with the applicants, but with staff and with the other commissioners. Uh, I think, uh, Mr. Chairman, that, uh, staff should look into it and, uh, I'm sure that either our councilmen will provide or either the money that is being saved of the food that was, that was, uh, kindly given to us during the meetings, uh, to provide the right equipment for us.
I'm gonna let Kirby answer, and I think Kirby has the answer.
Sure, yeah. That, uh, money for that food's being spent. We eat steaks, uh, now that we don't have to buy dinner for everybody. No, we, we, we unfortunately, no food has been purchased. We, we do have a little bit of savings, but we actually are in the process of ordering tablets. Uh, just a couple thing. I, as you can imagine, everybody in the world is ordering tablets. So it's been very difficult. It's been backed ordered. And, um, so we're working on getting some tablets. And we've been in that process for a few months now. And when we, when we get some, if somebody needs them, I'm, I'm not opposed to letting you borrow some equipment, uh, if you need it. Um, so when, when we get that equipment in and if, if you have a need, we'll try and help you out. Um, so I don't have a problem with that at all.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Well, for, I don't know, do we have any comments, Kirby, out of you right now? Anything you want to discuss?
Um, there are a couple of things, but I'm gonna save it for next meeting.
All right. That's fine. Then we'll take Commissioner Dominguez's motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I move the second.
There's a second. All those in favor, thank you very much for the-